This time I'll call this September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two meeting of the Jackson County Supervisor Board. We have Larry Devitt, Mike Spann, and myself, Jeff Boyer, and Supervisors. We have Lisa Smith, our Auditor, and Julie, Luanne Gopie, our Administrative Assistant. First item on our agenda this morning is Todd Kenny, Jackson County Engineer. Morning, morning, Todd.
Morning.
So the first item is discussion of the city of Monmouth, City Bridge Program Award Assistance. So they got awarded City Highway Bridge Program Funding for the Beers Creek Bridge. That's the, so on the far east side of town, it's actually, I don't, I don't think it's not paved road that goes north and has dead ends, that old trust bridge where the road is closed at that. I think it's an existing sixty foot trust. There's not a whole lot of information. I got what I could from the city. So it's a hundred percent funding, meaning it covered a hundred percent of the cost in the twenty twenty split. The issue is, it's a reimbursement type funding structure, so they have to front the money upfront and then submit reimbursement to the DOT to get reimbursed.
What kind of money are we?
Five hundred and fifty thousand. So the, the thing that I want to talk to board about is, so a couple of things. One, I know there's a lot of counties that would be quote unquote the, the bank for the city. So we don't charge interest. We, we front the money for them. We have a twenty eighty. When they get reimbursed, the money comes back to us. And it would have to be through the secondary road fund. It couldn't be through our farm to market or our bridge fund. It would literally have to be money. We would have to have in our secondary road fund, pay out to the contractor, then get reimbursed from the city replacement fund. So that, the number one, do you guys want to do that? Number two, if it's, uh, looks like it's going to be pretty straightforward design based on the surrounding structures, what's existing, doesn't look like it would be too, too involved and should be like a standard. I think so if it's a sixty foot trust or so, you know, seventy, eighty, even a ninety foot slab bridge is pretty standard. We could design it with the DOT design standard. So the next question is, do you want to assist them in the design that we would have to get reimbursed for? That would be money that is not part of the five hundred and fifty thousand. So I talked to Shandra. He's gonna prepare an application for the city of Monmouth to go get, use the rural county transportation funds potentially, whether they hire the county to do it or they hired a consultant, they're gonna need that money to get the bridge designed, um, so they can go to letting and utilize this funding. They have to decide whether they want it by like October tenth. They got ninety days from the date of this letter, which was July eighteenth, to turn the money down or accept it, sign the funding agreement or don't. So.
So can I let's design that way?
Well, I talked to Alex this morning. We're out looking at bridges real early. And I would like to use that as a pilot, like a training project with Jayden. So like, like those two together kind of mostly, not I shouldn't say mostly Jayden, but kind of use a side by side at that as a training opportunity for Jayden to design a structure with the DOT standards. Because I think it would be fairly straightforward.
So we have these kind of funds available that we could do that pass through and, and not put ourselves in
Yeah, so.
A position where it just rises and.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just a situation where we would maybe have to wait two months till we get the money. Yeah, so we have the, we have the, the, the cash balance to absorb that and then get reimbursed where a city couldn't float that money for two months or whatever it takes to get.
It's kind of a worry too, because that's the only other way in the town. I mean, if the one, if one bridge goes down.
Well, it's.
This is northern town, right?
It's on the north side of town. So I've heard rumblings.
I thought this was on the east side of town.
It's on the east side. It's right next to Ryan's, the street.
Yeah.
Probably right there.
Yeah.
So I've heard people say, well, why aren't, why is the city doing the one that's, I can't remember the street, but it's, it goes south off of there and then on the southwest side of town. Cause that bridge probably needs to be replaced in the next few years too. I don't know. I haven't seen it, but, but this is the, they got the money for this Beers Creek Bridge, so. That's not to say they wouldn't get money again in ten years to do the other bridge either.
I guess to me it makes sense if it's reimbursed back to, I mean, why, is there any negative to it?
This is actually work for us.
Oh, well.
No, it's a way, I think it's a good way for the counties to help small cities out to do this. I mean, um, helping them with the money is, is not a big deal at all. It's just a little bit of administration for them. If we're gonna do the inspection on it like we're doing for the city of Macokega, you know, we'll have to do a MOU for that as well. And that, that should be reimbursable as part of the twenty eighty as well. So it's two things. Number one, I guess I need a, a motion to authorize the engineer pair of MOU with the city of Monmouth to, to fund the project, meaning to be the, what's the right word? The, the, uh, to write claims and then the city reimburse the county with their VR money. And then the second part of that is, do you want us to, the county to provide design assistance for them?
Okay, so general, you and the twenty eighty kind of same thing, is that what?
Yeah, so I say MOU memorandum of understanding. It's not as, it doesn't have to get filed with the auditor and everything like a twenty eighty does. But it's a just agreed, it's a signed agreement by both parties.
So basically we're administering the funds from the grant?
Yeah, we would be providing the funds and then as part of the MOU, they would be reimbursing us.
I would make that one. I have a second. Motion in a second?
This is the motion just to have him prepare a memorandum of understanding.
Correct.
Okay.
For funding the project, for being the funding, assisting in the funding with reimbursement. And then the second part of it is, do you want us to help with the design? I mean.
Well, I think it's an actual opportunity to have Alex and Jayden or whoever in Jayden work on that and have hands on. And I mean, that's an opportunity. Yes, I would say yes.
I think we have, we have the first one first. And obviously it's gonna be an experience for him and it's gonna be good for the family. Second, all those in favor? I'm motion hearing. Now, motion to use our people to do the design.
Okay, I would say design and construction administration and observation. So we'd be after doing testing.
Hold on a second.
My first motion. So the, so the first motion was just to have authorize the county engineer to prepare a memorandum, memorandum of understanding. And the second motion I have is to authorize the Jackson County engineer to prepare the design and the bridge construction.
So it would be a second MOU for the design and CACO for the bridge. So it's two, two agreements.
To prepare.
With the city of Monmouth.
So then, uh, I'll contact the city right away. If you guys vote to approve this and let them know the county's number one, agreed to prepare MOU to be the funding mechanism. Two, to help or assist to do the design. And then that way they can respond to the, to the DOT. So their, the clock is ticking on that. So they'll have a little bit of time, but not a lot of time to get it.
So when does this still like activate then or not?
Oh, when is the funding then to be used by?
So my other question I have is, have you approved then the city bridge program award assistance? So the actual award assistance to the city of Monmouth?
The board doesn't have to prove that.
Okay.
Approving to be the agent is our assistance, correct?
Yeah, so I thought you meant the funding agreement. The board doesn't have to approve the funding agreement. That's directly with the city and the state. So we're just authorizing to provide assistance in the, the, to provide the, the initial funds and then get reimbursed through the VR funds. That's the MOU and that's basically what it'll state. And then the other one is the city's gonna, um, the, the county will do the design, the city will reimburse them with whatever funds they have. So that you better award them the rural county.
Is, is there a number attached to that design work?
So the, you guys, you guys award like twenty five thousand per city. I would think that would more than cover it. I don't think it'll approach that even close to that. So even if we do the survey and everything.
That's why I asked for a timeframe. So their application for that, that would be next year, correct?
Right. The project shall be let to contract within three years of the date of this agreement. So they have to let it till July of twenty twenty five, so. Well, we got plenty of time, but yes, I would think that we should have it to letting by sometime late twenty three or early twenty four, I would say. Next, it's just a temporary easement agreement with a property owner. This is in conjunction with the bridge replacement, day labor bridge replacement, Iowa zero two five two, temporary easement. Basically provide access on a run around, uh, so we can get people in and out. Well, it's, run around is just where you just usually have like a multi-covert or a single pick covert where people will get around the bridge being constructed, cause that's the only access. And then we'll restore it when we're done. When the bridge is open, we'll take it back out.
And whose agreement with the landlord, or?
Yes, with the landlord.
You have to. Is there?
Yeah, where's your, is there compensation? Oh, okay. I would make that motion. The motion is a second. Temporary construction easement, all those in favor?
And then the last item, uh, there's an entrance permit. This is kind of, so there's an existing house that's got a driveway that's at the very kind of concealer, but it's at the very north of their property up here. Let me get it right here, right here. Okay, so they got like seven big lines that come from the house out this way. They're gonna build a, a building out here and they want another driveway at this other corner. And they're, they're saying they can't just use this driveway because they have their leach field there. So this bottom corner is where they want it. Well, the site distance measured there from the, coming from the north and going south is only three hundred and twenty feet. So it's my understanding, past practices, if it was three sixty, uh, between five fifty and three sixty, you guys would put up a, like a hidden driveway sign and then allow them to do it. This is that three twenty. So I just, I guess, what do you guys want to do with that? Options would be, you, you allow it and you just put up in driveway side and even though you only have three hundred and twenty feet, you could, you could have them petition for a speed limit or reduce speed zone. Reduce speed zone would, would shorten the stopping site distance. Like if you went to forty miles an hour, you'd be down to like, uh, three hundred and five feet for stopping site distance. I, I mean, I tend not like to do that for, for a driveway, just to put up a, a reduced speed sign or, uh, uh, an actual speed limit zone. Yeah, basically.
Well, though, but then where's the liability coming if we don't do it in the process like we made it? This, there's gotta be reasoning behind it. So yeah.
Would reducing the speed take away some of our liability?
I mean, that would, that would probably be an attorney question that I really can't answer that. I would say, if you had, if you have a hidden driveway sign up and put up like a speed placard, like, so it's a warning sign. It's a black on yellow and then a speed placard of say forty, I would say, that would be, you know, have a substantial amount of liability removed because you're telling them to slow down to forty. Same way, if you put up a curve sign and say slow down to thirty, you don't slow down to thirty. You take the curve to go in the ditch. Well, you didn't abide by the warning, so you could probably, the thing with the warning sign is just a warning. So speed limit is actual, uh, you know, law. So, I mean, that, that's your options, I guess. It's just.
So they're putting the building back and this is their only option? Did you get back to the building? So it's kind of a hardship case here or?
I would say, yeah, I don't know.
Did they get a permit for the building?
I don't know. That's not, that's through the like planning zone. Do you guys issue building permits?
Yeah. Yes.
You know, three hundred and twenty feet, if it was forty more feet in past practice, you would just put up a hidden driveway sign. I would say, I mean, maybe the next level of protection would be to put up the hidden driveway sign and a speed plaque like you would on a curve, like hidden driveway for forty miles an hour.
I could agree to that. Is it enforceable? Not enforceable at all. It's a suggestion. It releases liability from us.
Yeah, it's just warning them to slow down because there's limited site distance.
The driveway could go out, that's going out to the west, could go out to the north.
Well, the driveway, you turn out either way. The driveway is just coming up to a north south road. You go out either way.
Basically, it's just protecting us.
Yeah. I, I would venture to guess you have multiple driveways in the county where you have limited site distance. You have no site.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you could, you could bring this up with the county attorney if you want to and see what she has to say, but.
I mean, just put the speed, I think it's more than the driveway sign up with the speed forty more.
Check the files.
Was there a crossroad to the north of that?
It's five hundred and fiftieth avenue. There's no.
There's no, oh, there's nothing to the north.
Yeah, there's no adjacent property.
So.
According to.
Okay, I should see that line there.
Yeah, I thought it was a road going east and west.
Yeah, so he wants to put the, he wants to put the building in here, the driveway there because he's got leach field that comes out like this. So he can't use his driveway to.
I thought there's.
So so if you're coming south of the, the, the distance, is there a hill there that the distance is only three hundred feet? Look wide open to me.
Yeah, there's a hill as you come from the north heading south.
So I guess my, how do we relate to him that there is distances, parameters that he needs to follow to stay away from the Schultz property? Back, side, front. Back, back for sure.
Well, that's your zoning permit.
Yeah, but people don't get zoning permits and then the building's up.
Does he have a permit for his, his existing driveway?
Yeah.
And that's okay?
Yeah, that one was spotted. This one was spotted.
So if he went into his existing driveway and drove south, that would go across his leach field. His leach field is to the east of that five fifty.
So what I understand is, so this driveway here is kind of at the top of the apex of a hill. So you can, he's at the top. So coming from the north, you can see it because everything's at the top. Problem is, this one's down here. So as you come to this hill, as you get here, you're just on this side of the hill. You can't really see. Cause this driveway is like at the very top of the hill.
Two hundred and fifty feet, isn't it? Two forty, like three hundred feet?
Are there?
Okay, so wait a minute. So what was the motion that you made was to?
The hidden driveway and the speed limit.
Do you guys have a ordinance that says you're, on your property, you have driveways that have to have a certain separation distance?
From property line?
No, from an adjacent driveway. So I have a driveway on my, my property. I can't put another driveway on my property because it's so many feet.
I'm not aware of that. Speaking of parks. They, they know it. The T intersection, you put a driveway in down, there's probably ten foot of distance, maybe or twelve foot. Sixteen foot distance from that road to where the side of grass driveway to get into this farm. But this two culverts and this packery down in there, somebody went off the road and ran up the culverts and here's all that's here there. But when you turn that corner to go around it, tire tracks are only maybe two feet away from dropping in this hole, which is at least, but it just looks like a safety hazard. He's put up a mailbox there. Doesn't use, but he put the mailbox up just as a warning that there's this big hole right there that you really don't see it until you're right on top. I don't know if you could look at.
What's the address or location?
So why don't you stop and we're talking, Todd, about that after we decide what we're doing here? I guess as long as Larry, as, as long as Lori walked in here.
Yeah.
You brought that back. You're gone with that? So I'm okay with this motion to put in the sign up as long as this building is going to be within parameters.
Scott Bodie wants to put up an accessory building. Looks like this.
An accessory building is going to be down at the bottom off to the.
Where about? Where about? South East Quarter of what? So this is the green parcel and we're in section twenty seven of Iowa Township.
So I'm down towards.
It's a speed ladder.
Okay. My north is to do with them. Okay, five fifty, okay.
Fifty comes off of sixty four, correct?
Yeah, north of.
So let's see. You know what? Here's, so actually, you know, you're more towards miles because here's miles right here. So we're, we go from miles to this little green. So you're.
Put a new bridge on that road, did we?
Okay. So what's, what's?
They want to put an entrance at the bottom of that.
You're about three miles from, yeah.
Go way closer. They haven't talked to me, have they?
You, let's just say this, you haven't talked to me about this. So I don't know if they've talked to you. This is not one that we've talked about.
This is new to me. So they must be just getting their leg of work with you, Todd.
Point is, Lori, I'm, I'm okay with the driveway putting the sign up as long as they're in parameters with their village.
Yeah, they're gonna need to beat their setbacks.
They, where it is, is going only three hundred and twenty feet of, of site distance. And so we either have to, we'd have to put up a hidden driveway and a speed limit sign. Um, cause usually it's a three hundred and forty.
It's three sixty, what you've done in the past. And it's, it's a warning speed placard. It's not a speed limit. So it's just a warning of speed reduction.
It's not enforceable, but it's a warning.
Yeah.
But he wants to put the second driveway.
To the south, okay. Yeah, uh, as far as our concern would be for, for zoning this, that they're meeting their, their setbacks. It's already a parcel. I'm assuming it's two acres or more. But if not, it's probably, yeah, cause it was split after two thousand one. So it would have to meet the two acre.
I doubt it because it is real estate. It's res. So about two point four acres. I mean, I can go to parcel report. Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, but yeah, there's setbacks. Longest or medium, I think for A one, it's gonna be forty foot.
Are we adding to the motion? Are we just approving the driveway?
As long as she's hearing those about and just proving the driveway. I'd like to see it. I'd like to see some coordination there when they come into one of these, make sure that you're, it's hitting your office too, so you know if they're gonna if they need a permit.
Yeah, and as a rule, we're really, we've gotten really a lot better about communicating. So this is, I'm sure this stuff.
So just so I'm clear, you're approving the second entrance. And that's it.
With the entrance, the head sign and.
See, I just took that out. I just want to make sure. So.
Just with the hidden driveway sign with forty mile an hour speed suggested.
Warning.
Hold on a second. Any more discussion? You're none, all those in favor? All right. All right, motion hearing.
And then to, to Larry's point about the coordination, like, so this permit, they wouldn't necessarily have to tell us they're putting the building. I mean, I think through discussion, he said, well, you know, we're, we're gonna be building the building and I wanted to be able to get to it. And I think he was describing why he couldn't just use the existing driveway. But if I, if, if somebody just wants a driveway permit, they don't necessarily have to tell us to build the building.
I would agree.
So I don't know. I guess.
Stacy's still good about after it's done. She sends an email out letting us know that there's been a permit, driveway permit acquired.
Okay.
Which is all, it still works. Yeah, thank you.
And that's all. And the reason they want the second driveway is because you can't use the existing one because of their frame field.
That's it. I didn't drive through there today. Yeah, I wanna say it'll be done in three weeks. Hopefully by before the end of October. They gotta do multiple pores and then they gotta bring the topsoil and stuff up on the west side and see that. They gotta back our road a doo. And then I think they gotta switch everything over. And then they gotta do that rail separation between the bike path and the mainline paving. So basically the one side has to be completely done because they're gonna turn all traffic over on there and then do the, do the, the bridge railing. So.
They have a twenty one day waiting period on that tank for the approaches or is that just on bridge?
No, they'll probably be, for mainline paving, I think it's five days and five hundred, five hundred PSI. So they'll, I think it's either, I have to inspect it. It's like, you know, five or seven days and then there's PSI spec. It might be like four fifty for, four fifty or five hundred for, uh, just regular mainline, structural concrete to look different. We're out, Alex and I were out looking at bridges this morning. I have to inspect two bridges with him to do a team leader evaluation of your team leader who does inspections for the county. That's part of the QA QC for the federal highway and the EVAIS standards. So I did two with him and then I have to go out myself and look at eight of the bridges that he inspected in the last twelve months. And just check to make sure his, his condition ratings, the pictures he's taken, the documentation on SIMS. SIMS is the online tool where you input all the data for your inspections. Like we put everything into SIMS and the DOT can see everything we have on SIMS. That's where they run the reports and queries and everything, so.
So is Jayden involved in that process too?
He is not because he, he has to take the two week class because right now he wouldn't even be considered an inspector because he does have a minimum qualification. So. So he, we've already researched when that next class is gonna be available or anything. He might have to travel ways to get to that too. They're not offered all the time readily available, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Todd.
Yep.
Always, always someone down there by.
Miles? The paving?
It's a hundred.
No, we're not working on the bridge between Green Island and.
Oh, yeah, trailer?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're driving pile. I mean, they're moving.
Yeah, I haven't been down back in there either.
I don't see the road code signs, so.
Yeah, I saw those today. We're trying to get to, we went to two bridges and I will say, it's hard to find certain places in Jackson.
It ain't square. It ain't square. You have to know some of the farmers where you can cut through.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's like very aesthetic driving through there, but it's like, some, I wanna say some of the hills, I mean, I, the first hill I took on this, I forget what road it was, but I'm like, yeah, I think I better slow down. It's pretty early.
The bus probably traveled that road.
But yeah, it's just, I mean, and the roads are pretty much follow the terrain, so.
Some of those on the right, the bus, if you're in the backseat, you get air going.
Those crazy bus drivers. I, I could see looking in the rearview, seeing how high their heads come over my seat.
You gotta have some control.
Yeah, that's all I have, so.
Yes, do you wanna watch me add, add the signature?
Well, come over here and watch him sign it. If you would.
Good morning.
Hi.
Morning.
Hi, so in your packets, uh, you should have. Uh, text amendment ordinance. Information for three oh six and three oh seven, three oh six, uh, we. Our commission at their August meeting first mentioned concerns with the way. Uh, our permits were referred to zoning permits in the ordinance, and basically it's not. Uh, I mean, it's alluded to, but it's never formally drawn out as a zoning permit and. And that, that's just the basic tool used for, to, to show that zoning requirements have been met, so. The commission asked us to put the text amendment together. Just spelling out what the permit is, why, when you need a permit, a zoning permit. And you can see the information that we presented to the commission, when I say we, Laura, Laura Carstens from ECIA. And then the changes that were made, so everything that is, uh, in red is, is the new words that were added. And, uh, you can see the things that were struck also, uh, the one big thing that was struck in that was. That the administrator shall have seven days to approve or deny set applications, that's not. It's not doable in a lot of cases, um, there's a lot of times where the, the permit will be incomplete. Where they've submitted that, excuse me, the applications they complete, they've submitted the application. Uh, without all of the corresponding paperwork such as site plans. Uh, for the setbacks, building plans, and in a lot of cases, they haven't submitted their application fee. Uh, and then in the case that. Staff members were out for a week, me or Elizabeth, I coordinate with Elizabeth to make sure that they're. Well-inseptic applications have been applied for, means for compliance has been identified, you know, she's not there, you know, we're kinda out of the loop there also. So I can't approve it, can't deny it, so.
So is that gonna be a problem? Seven days?
Oh, we struck it.
Struck the whole thing out of there?
Struck, yes.
And you didn't put a timeframe in it?
Unless you would like that to be added and we can send it back.
If it's not necessary.
Yeah, cause what, what would you set for? You know, and then have it. Yeah. So if it, if it does become an issue, it can always be changed if we can find a, something that works. But, but yeah, I mean, at the same time though, I do now, if I don't have everything I need, we'll reach out to the property and let them know what I'm making. And I have documentation, it's like, so.
Well, it certainly spells it out.
Okay, yeah, that's one of the, you know, one of the other changes besides. You know, adding the words zoning permit and did change. Well, it goes, the administrator changed the wording to that instead of administrative officer, that goes back to the text amendment change, but that's still. But anyway, I would request that, uh. I don't know how to do this, the guys are kind of walking through it.
So we have to set a public hearing for that, right?
Yes, please.
Can we do both at the same time?
Certainly.
Uh, at two different times, you can set the same date at two different times.
Okay, so do you wanna discuss three oh seven a little bit before we do that?
Certainly, so three oh seven, uh, on the August fifteenth meeting, when we were talking about. Making changes to the wording for permits, I'd also just brought up the fact that it might also be a good time to do the gender neutral changes. In the ordinance that goes back from nineteen seventy six, just simple changes, uh, he's, he, his hymns were changed basically to. Um, them, they, there, or administrator. Um, chairperson was, was in place of chairman. So that, and then you can also see the changes in red, um, page two, if you care to look at those. Got it, okay. Okay.
They were highlighted on me.
But yes, I would ask that you set public hearings for.
What's our dates?
October eighteen, at ten and ten oh five.
I would move to public hearings for ordinance three oh six and at ten. On October eighteenth and three oh seven at ten oh five, October eighteen.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
Can I just add one thing not related to those? We're good, okay.
This is your time.
Okay, anyway, last week, um, during our meeting, I mentioned that we needed to be, we, we. I need to be more proactive, you know, uh, better informing the public on zoning. Issues and rules, since our last meeting, I have set up more public or for, uh. Different speaking opportunities at different things. Okay, yeah, I'll do that, but yeah, so we have Balden's Women's Club on the backup for the third. Optimist on the twelve, Rotary on the twelve, and then in February, I'll change the motion. On those calendars right now.
I was just wondering, like, constantly for that doing.
Yes and no, um, I know someone had brought that up, but that, I don't wanna confuse city zoning with.
Do you think it would be advantageous to now make a presentation at the Farm Bureau? Committee meetings?
Sure.
They're friendly, they always have something for you.
You know.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Doing the most building.
Well, yeah, and, and then too, there's people, yeah, I would be more than happy to, because, yeah, those are usually what I'm gonna call real farmers. And not the two acre farmers that think they don't need a zoning permit.
Well, so. Am I understanding correct, if it's egg, you don't need a permit if it's a farm?
Well, let's, but we, we have a checklist, I, I don't know if you guys even might wanna look that over, what. Jackson County's been using on their list for, for check offs for their determination, whether it's, uh, farming exempt.
I think they should have a permit, I mean, if you don't even charge them for it, we just.
I think it would be advantageous for us to see the list.
Okay, okay, I don't have it right now, but I.
Sure, who makes a determination?
Well, that's one of the problems I think we're having, some people that it's like, well, I'm zoning egg, I'm a farmer, he, not, not. And I don't know, I, I've told you guys this story, twenty years ago, we built a garage, but. My husband didn't realize that we needed a permit. And because he's like, we're zoning egg, we don't need that for a garage, well, I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna check with Dave Manning, and sure enough, he's like, you not only need a permit. You need a variance, so, yeah, but you know, that was twenty years ago, and we've both been educated along the way. So.
No, I mean, there definitely is a lack of education as far as that goes, I mean, that's, I mean, and. You're gonna get X amount, I don't wanna play by the rules anyway, but.
Right, and, um, but it has with some of that right now. So, and I know you've had conversations with one, I don't know if you've had a conversation with two of them or not, but. But anyway, all right. Uh, I'll get you that list that I have, and yeah, who's our Farm Bureau, who's our president for that, oh, Scotty.
You need it?
I think I have Scotty.
Let me know. Are you out to lunch for a while too, or are you, are you around?
Around, um, Laura's coming in at one o'clock for us to talk about some things, we might be taking a. Road trip, field trip out to Leisure Lake, to look over some things that we're working on with that Leisure Lake, uh, planning it development. Uh, rezoning that we're working on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get a hold of Becky?
Yeah.
Real recess and we're joined by. We're gonna reconvene and Lisa Smith, the auditor, is going to hold refer agenda items.
So this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, twenty two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Second, the motion and a second to approve the publication of our four minutes from the previous meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of two hundred and sixty three thousand, four hundred and forty one dollars and seventy one cents.
So moved with the note that there was a hundred thirty in paper.
Motion and a second to authorize payment of the warrants, all those in favor?
I also need a motion to approve and authorize a handwritten warrant to Area Substance Abuse Council, which is ASAC, for the drug-free communities drug grant support. For September twenty twenty two for seven thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars and seventy three cents, it had to have been done last week. Because of the way that our claims hit, so, um, that's why it's not in today's claims, it had to be done last week.
Again, so that's a pasture.
It is, it is a pasture.
So moved.
For the handwritten warrant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried.
And the last thing that I have today is. I need a motion to approve the amendment of a Class C native wine permit with outdoor service and Sunday sales. To the Tabor Winery at thirty five seventy sixty seventh street Baldwin, effective August seventh, twenty twenty two through August sixth, twenty twenty three. I believe the amendment is the ownership percentage.
That's the wine, native wine permit for the bigger family winery, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Okay, thank you. And Becky, we're ready for you whenever you're ready for us.
When I was basically during my office, it shows.
Space here.
Feel like my office is chilly? So anyway. Okay, certificates of appointment, so, um, the county attorney had hired a temporary law clerk as we transitioned to get the ILO approvals approved. Which, um, that has come through, um, she unfortunately has had to resign employment before she could actually accept the full-time position to stay on board with us. But she is going to stay on board, working two and a half days, we're hoping to help cover magistrate court, at least through the month of October. So we're gonna go ahead and do the certificate of appointment that will allow her to ask, um, on behalf of the county attorney. So I have a certificate of appointment today that I would ask for a motion to approve the certificate of appointment for Sean Orion as Assistant County Attorney. Effective through December thirty first, twenty twenty two, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks at an hourly rate of thirty six, thirty two.
The move.
So these certificates are all actually issued through the end of the elected officials' term unless sooner or later, if they resign. Um, so they're all, that's why it's just December thirty first and eventually it's a little bit longer.
So is your cast tied to sir or to the official?
To the elected official, so that'd be no different than any elected official, you're not. Elected officials don't have to assume that responsibility of the people in the position under them, they can, but they can also choose to. Yeah, they're appointed by the elected official. So the next one I have is an appointment for Wes Unki, he is a current deputy sheriff whose probationary, uh, period has expired. So I would ask for a motion to approve the certificate of appointment for Wes Unki as deputy sheriff, effective through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks at an hourly rate of thirty fourteen per hour.
And a second. Or Wes Unki has a deputy sheriff, um, through December thirty first, all those in favor?
Aye.
By motion carried.
And then the last certificate I have is for a sheriff's deputy Joel Driscoll, who has been hired by the sheriff's department. Um, he is currently working part-time for the sheriff's department, um, with, uh, one of our deputies resigning his full-time position, I don't know if he will transfer into a full-time position. Or how that's all gonna play out yet, um, but I do have a certificate of appointment approved. And this is for a motion to approve the certificate of appointment for Joel Driscoll as deputy sheriff for a nine-month probationary period. Effective through April first of twenty twenty three, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks at an hourly rate of thirty fourteen.
Second, motion and a second.
All right, motion carried.
And then on June twenty eighth, the board approved compensating, um, the assessor's office in order to assist with maintaining direct services for Jackson County. We agreed at that time that we would review this in three months, which would technically be the end of September, they're going into October. Um, I have had a chance to visit with Jess a little bit about how it's going within the department. Um, I don't know if she is available now, I don't know if you wanna speak to her, if you just want me to kinda tell you how, if I think it's going or where you wanna go with this.
Well, I did talk to her after our meeting when we kinda thought maybe she was coming in and then didn't. And she said she would come and address us whenever we wanted to, and I asked her how things were going, and she said.
That's the same.
Yeah, she said.
Conversation you had?
Yeah, yeah, she said there's been a lot of upkeep, they, a lot of upkeep, they had, had a couple of upgrades to the nine one one system, which obviously throws off adversaries. And then she's got a little GeoCom, and that was time consuming, but now it's set until they do the next step.
I, I realized there were some issues there and it's, I, I, it sounds like they're a little demanding in some of that, but it's gotta be right.
Right.
You know, I mean, you're not gonna send an emergency personnel to the wrong spot.
Right. Yeah, so she's worked through that, she's learning the system, she's actually enjoying it, she hasn't had anybody reach out with like large projects like we've seen the city do in the past, she hasn't had that. Um, there was mention of it, but nobody has come to her asking for anything, um, Janelle is quite instrumental with the surveys and the internal real estate stuff that they do, so she is kind of. Um, she's being compensated by as well, but she is kinda doing her share there too. Um, we currently have a stipend for Jess, um, the assessor, and then Janelle, um, that was approved on the annual basis for them. If you're wanting to maintain status quo with, you know, the arrangement we have, if you want, Buck is not here today, he's actually in the class.
I would say if it's working, I'm fine with them, but it's minimal, what we're doing here, and if, if it's working out good, uh, don't kick your dog, you know?
Well, she basically told me that she wasn't, I mean, she wasn't having any problems and everything was going to.
So. Well, there's no sense in having her come and say the same thing.
Yeah.
I would say we're, they're good with it, if you guys are good with it, we'll let it be, if Buck wants to address the board, if he feels otherwise, then we'll happen to do that, otherwise we'll just.
I agree.
We'll go with that, we'll just continue.
There's no action there, correct?
That was just an update, unless you wanted to discuss any changes.
You needed action to do it again for three months or?
No, we just said that we, it, the motion was actually to approve the annual, so, we just said we would talk about it in three months to make sure. Um, and the last thing I have was the return of the EMS coordinators documents and property, I had sent a certified letter to Ryan Conley requesting the return of, um, records. That he had on faculty EMS, um, department, as well as a laptop that was issued to his department. He did reach out to me yesterday and brought the laptop in. Um, I talked to him about the physical documentation. He stated that the paper documentation that he would have brought in to show the board and the binders and all of that would have actually been records that belonged to the EMS service providers, so the independent departments. So he didn't feel as far as EMS coordinator, any of those were Jackson County.
They went to EMS.
Yeah, they're back with the individual departments.
Do we know that?
I, he was in yesterday at four fifteen and I did not reach out to anybody to confirm that what we can do that. I can do that and make sure.
Yeah, I would do that because he did stuff in here when, went down in the hall, but.
Yeah.
So he brought the computer back and.
Yeah, so most of his work as the department was on the computer or online. Um, so he felt like his records were.
Um, so did we have an exit interview also as we talked about or no?
No.
Yeah, I would, if I were you, I could check with EMS services to make sure they have their records as needed.
Okay. Okay.
So have you had any um, um, applications for the opening that we asked for?
There has been a couple that have come through, but like I kind of told Lori, when we just did this with conservation, we ended up with forty-seven, forty-nine applications. Um, thirty-five was then came in on the day before. So, yeah. Um, I would anticipate there being a lot of response to it.
Are we, are we just putting it in his own position? Our assistant?
The assistant, yeah.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
And I also wanna discuss since we um, made an offer to a second individual as a uh, an assistant county engineer who apparently has decided not to come to Jackson County. Are we going to try to attract another assistant county engineer? Or are we going to stay as we are now?
Well, I personally think we should assess it after them guys are here for a year and see what Todd was, I mean, Todd's running the place, so I mean, I guess it's his.
Okay.
It's his position to hire. Is that, am I correct in that?
That's, that's the twenty-eighties. I view assuming the position of that county engineer, the whole department, yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna go for his recommendation. If he thinks we should, I would definitely.
Well, as long as, as long as we can keep him, I, I'm perfectly fine with it.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we certainly need to consider this when Mike is resigning, I suppose.
I did, I talked to Todd about it last week. Um, just kind of mentioned where he wanted to go with the assessment. He had indicated that, you know, with his term as engineer not being indefinite, that it might not be a bad idea to kind of let sleeping dogs lie and see where the department goes and you know, if he were to not become an engineer, would the new county engineer not hire a new assistant? Kind of thing. So he thought maybe give it some time if that didn't work out.
He gave us some warning. I think he's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just you'd have the opportunity for a new engineer to possibly hire the next assistant, you know, within a year, next year or two.
Pretty good right now. I guess.
I think so, yeah.
Sat down and talked to any of them, I suppose.
Yeah.
I met one in the apartment a lot. I said, oh, he's very great. So I, that's all I need to know.
So, yeah, I would say give us some time. I don't know if there's a reason to forcefully re-advertise right now. It's still out on ISAC, just like it's an ongoing. I guess I'll tell you what's still empty.
Well, there's no harm in that. It's not costing us anything to pursue and we can always look and talk in the future. Something right is that intrigues us.
Well, I'm telling you, um, Larry, that you and Shawna and Sarah Davenport had the same penmanship teacher.
We should all do that.
There we go. It's not quite as bad as yours, but it's getting there.
Shawna too. Attorneys do that for a reason, you know?
Yeah, there's a war.
They don't want you to read it.
You can't tell whether uh, F or an X.
Stein is early, yeah.
Like a twenty-two. Okay, that's all I had. I'll reach out to the county providers and check this out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yep.
Okay, Lillian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the five minutes, we almost, maybe keep it within the morning hours. Calendar for this week, um, I don't have anything else on the calendar for today. For tomorrow, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, at nine AM is an IRIS meeting, interviewed by Zoom for Larry. Anyone else who wants to attend? I know you've been attending those meetings too. Um, nothing for Thursday. Friday, September thirtieth, at seven AM is a focus of the leadership team by Zoom for Larry. And at nine AM is an Isaac's executive committee meeting by Zoom, also for Larry. And I think that afternoon is Pam Tru's retirement.
Mm-hmm, two, huh?
Yes, yes, two to four, I believe. Yep. But it's a Hurstville Center. Monday, October third, at nine AM, it's a conservation board meeting regarding the destination Iowa project. It will be downstairs in our community room or by Zoom for all of you that want to attend that. And at one o'clock that afternoon is a Mississippi Valley workforce outreach improvement campaign discussion on their RFPs that they received. Um, that is either to be the Devonport Iowa Works or by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October fourth, at nine AM. And at five PM that evening will be the Jackson County Economic Alliance Goal Setting Meeting, also in our community room or by Zoom downstairs for Jack. And I had on my agenda, if one to, I had the GIS position on my agenda, but um, Becky took care of that. I only, I don't think I had, if you want to talk about the sale of the Wellness Center at all.
I talked to Alex and I sent that email. You seem, it was late last night when he sent it to me.
Yeah, right.
I did forward it on. He did find the southeast pin, the southwest pin and the southwest pin, but not the northeast pin. So where you go in the east driveway and you go up into that gate, basically to the rock quarry, I suppose. That pin there, he could not find.
Is Mike Weber gonna reset that pin or something? How was Mike Weber at?
I don't think that we went that far. I thought we were just gonna have Alex look at it and see what he can find. And he put the last.
Oh, he didn't, where did he come down and flag it?
I thought Alex flagged it. He put in his letter that I sent last night that he put a last stake and there's one in the front yard.
Yeah.
And then you can see, you know, and I was down there last Wednesday. I did not walk back through that timber. I was.
Larry, have you been down there lately at all or?
Well, yeah, I was back in the timber. I couldn't find the north.
Are we concerned about?
He said a state.
Are we concerned about anything as far as do we need to change the lock down there or it sounds, I mean, Mike, you've made a comment before about seems like there's plenty of keys out there. Do we need, do we know who's going in there?
Marty or Tom had said that, that there's keys available, but I, I I don't know.
Well, I'll tell you, when I was down there um, last week before you came down.
Yep.
There were all kinds of keys laying on the desk. Well, and I did try a couple of them and they did open the door.
Oh.
So um, I don't know. Um, I just left them there, but um.
So is Tom, does the, I guess, you know, because we are the keeper of the keys for the courthouse. I mean, are we the keeper of the keys for county property? That's the question is, do we wanna try and get these keys back to limit access to the building now? Because honestly, we don't really know who's going in and out.
Yeah, so I guess with that being said, what's our, where are we in the process of signing it?
We still got stuff to get out of it, right?
Well, yeah, but then let's make a arrangements with our maintenance department to go down and move it out and to try to repair our friendly little fellow that comes by the electrical box.
Yeah, we, he needs a new home.
We gotta close that up so that he can't get in there. He's making a mess in there again, whatever. Yeah, and the down by the electrical box. I mean, there's a pile of.
Yeah.
Oh, it's huge. It's at the top and it's at the bar.
He's a busybody, yes. And maybe he has a family and grandchildren. I don't know.
I would suggest that we have Martin go down there.
He does.
We hope anyway.
I would suggest that we have him go down there anyway or.
And it would be good if we could find somebody that could take down the hornet's nest. That's right outside.
It's beautiful, though.
It is.
I'm telling you, I did not see that hornet's nest, but he seen me when I come out. It was right here behind his ear.
Yeah.
Just as you go in the door, it's right up.
It is. It's beautiful. It's gotta be, it's gotta be this big.
I was in my timber moment, we just. And I.
And I hit one with my. Is the hornet's nest active?
I don't know if the nest is active, but the dude that come out of it's active. He dropped me right here behind the ear.
It's, it's, it's pretty. I'm sorry. It's beautiful. If there would be some way that, I know it's gonna sound ki- kinda crazy, but if we could preserve that somehow, I think the, I think that uh, I think the Hurstville Interpretive Center would take it.
Your best way to do that is start conservation then, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, when my mother, my mother was having trouble with hornets.
Mm-hmm.
And she didn't know what in the world. Well, they just, I mean, they had an old house and the basement, they were, the guy came and there was a big hornet's nest in her basement.
Basement?
Yes, it was a, a dirt basement back then. And so, and they took a garbage bag and covered the hornet's nest with that and then holes in it that killed all the hornets that were in there. And um, but they said when they shot that stuff in it, the, the, the bag just went like this with the hornets trying to get away. And they couldn't get away. And so they all died in there, but.
Um, I.
Who came and took it?
I would like to.
Quit telling the story.
I would like to officially say that I'm too busy to do that.
See what their process is. If you wanna save the nest itself, but if you're gonna save the occupants, that's a different ballgame.
So the time's coming where the queen will move out of that nest and go into the ground somewhere and they abandon the nest for the winter.
Yeah.
Oh.
We have a cross tonight, so.
Right.
That time is very close by.
Oh.
We don't have cross.
So all kidding aside, what is the direction of how much cleaning do you wanna do? Do you wanna sell it as is? I mean, I know that we need to send Marty and however, we need to take the whatever is left there. I think we need to somehow.
Did you talk to, do they want them items for their grad sale?
Their grad sale was last weekend. Oh, I did talk to um, 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 that Bonnie about it and um, she did, I, I did go down and I did get um, three of the desks that had been donated from the Red Schoolhouse, 'cause people that had donated them wanted to make sure that they stayed with the historical society or with somebody. And that was the Millers. So I got, first time I came back, I brought one of the desks. The second, they wanted the water cooler because they had given the water cooler too. So they are, they're at the museum. The next time I went down, I got the little children's desk that had the nameplate on it that was from Millers. And there was another desk that was from Frank Miller and, and his wife. So I brought those all back in my car, which wasn't easy. And then I brought the stool that the water cooler sat. So they are at the museum. Um, I boxed up all of the books that were downstairs and they're down there. And I boxed up some of the, some of the um, knickknacky stuff. There wasn't much, but I sh- I showed Lisa. They had cups and saucers and I told you where they turned the saucer upside down and then glued the cup to the bottom of the saucer. And so, so they're of no value, um, because you can't get them apart.
Mm-hmm.
And they're in a box and then there's some other things. But upstairs, there were books in, in above, I boxed those up. Um, and we counted, there are forty-two of those chairs with a cushion.
Really? They're nice. They're nice.
There are forty-two of them, that stackable.
So I did talk to Dean Engel from the Together We Build and they also are interested in those chairs. And I said, Dean, if you've been down to the Peace Pipe Players, Players Building, we have plenty of chairs and they're all gonna get used one way or the other, through the courthouse, through the new law enforcement center, through the Together We Build, yeah.
Lisa and I talked about is, they said in the EOC room, they were gonna want about forty chairs for, for well, it would be nice if they all matched. And these do all match and they have a nice cloth cushion on them.
Yeah, yeah.
And um, and the conference table up there seats eight people and it's nice, I think, you know, like we could have Marty come down, go down and get that and the eight chairs that go around it and bring that back.
Um, and that desk that's up there that appears to look like a little top, it's not a roll top.
Yeah.
Size, it looks like a roll top. There's no top on it.
Oh.
Yep.
No.
It's a nice enough.
The only roll top desk was in the lower level. And um, while we were there, we were looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I said to Lisa, I said, could I buy that? Cause that's what Marilyn wants, is a small one for the one room. And she said, yes. So Sunday I went down to get it and it was gone. Really? And so I had no idea who took it, where it went to, but it was in the lower level.
I didn't notice it Wednesday when I was there. I don't know if it was there with Tuesday. You said it was there Tuesday.
We were there Tuesday afternoon, yeah.
Didn't notice what was down there.
So.
Downstairs in the far corner.
Yeah.
But somebody got it.
Do you think, does Tom know who got that or who was down there? I would touch base with Tom. Was was it something?
It's the only thing that was taken.
I don't think he was down there since.
Okay. But there's probably still about maybe six school desks.
Hmm, yeah, probably.
And.
I would say that the, if you think about from top to bottom, we need to take the desk out of there and put it somewhere. Um, obviously though, that table and eight chairs that match, that needs to go here to the courthouse, go downstairs into the conference room. The forty-two chairs, I believe, or forty chairs, we can probably store them at the Peace Pipe Players Building. That will pretty much empty out the upstairs coming down.
So the panels are gone.
Oh, okay. Well, if we have to, yeah. So then when you go downstairs, of course, there is an old wooden desk there. Um, there is the old, on the main floor, there's the, the attached blackboard that could probably come down. Um, and then there's five or six probably still school desks. There are some cleaning supplies in the closet. Um, downstairs, yeah.
In a long.
And you know, honestly, I feel kinda bad about this, but there are quite a few, what did I count? Six or seven display racks for brochures. And you know, they look just like what we have here. I know Bob Sisler made ours how many years ago? And so they're very similar to that. So I don't know if Bob made them also, but I don't see where anybody has any need for them.
Well, he had said, when I talked to Tom, that he was gonna go down and he was gonna take those brochure racks that he had a place for them. And he was gonna, and, and you were right, Mike, he did take the, the pamphlets. All hundred and fifty boxes. Oh, really?
Yeah.
It wasn't that. There was a lot of pamphlets. So those were gone.
Yeah.
But there's, there, I mean, there's still stuff to be removed.
Yeah.
Okay, so how, what, where, how do you wanna proceed? I mean, do you want, Marty, do you go down and move that stuff out and?
And did you decide anything about, about the desk that's upstairs?
Um, so that old, you know, again.
That was Tom's desk.
Right. Yeah, it's up, way upstairs. It looks like the roll top. That isn't the roll top. That does, okay. Um, you know, again, I think between all of the different things, applications that we have going on, I, I, I think we can probably try and store it um, at the Peace Pipe Players Building. It'll be tight, but we can try and make some room and um, again, we'll store it until everybody's buildings are all built and we can figure out.
Yeah, you know, it might even be a desk for John to use in the utility building or something. You know, some kind of table.
Yeah.
I think he wants a large table.
Yeah.
Even if, even if.
John Hanson.
Oh, okay. To lay his, to lay his paperwork down, even if the one in the basement is, you, you can put it together enough to use it. I, I don't know. You, did you look at that yet or that? I thought you and Marty decided there was something not functional there, is where you, okay. So, yeah, you decide which one you wanna put in the community or. Which, whatever.
The question is, do you wanna put the screens up there or they? Those screens are super heavy and they're old. Do we even bother going to that?
What screens?
There's two big. Two screens.
Oh, okay.
I would, I would connect with Bjorn before you get too crazy on that.
Yeah.
I mean, to me.
So how do you?
Probably all. But I actually, I talked to a, a number of people that have said, you know, why don't you just take bits on it and see what, what comes out?
On the sale of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, wait a minute, before we get to that point. So once Marty goes down and he takes all of the stuff out and it's empty, then what do you want done?
Right.
Who do you want to do then? You wanna, you want Mike and?
I think we have to hire a cleaning service. I think we have to hire a cleaning service to go in.
As long as we get the critters out, stay out.
So who do we contact to, to have a cleaning service come in and clean it?
I don't know.
Well, we've got some bits from here. Uh, the people that do that.
Well, if you get somebody like Serve Pro as an example, when situations happen in the jail, we really pay. So you better be sitting down when that bill comes in because.
So.
What about our new guy here?
I'm, I'm saying, so is that, is that an option for Mike and, and Denny?
All three of them go down there?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, if we send Mike and Denny down and.
Let's have a conversation with them or something to that effect.
If they're done, they're loading up stuff, they can say, I mean, spend some time in jail.
So as far as taking bids, how do you wanna proceed? Do you want to, uh, are you planning on listing it or not listening it or trying to sell it yourself or?
Well, that's a decision that three of us have to make.
Yep.
And I don't know.
I like the idea of listing it because it gets out there and you've got more people looking at it.
Well.
It's important to the price.
I mean, you've heard the speech this morning. I mean, it is a professional. I think you should contact all the agencies. If you're gonna do that, contact all the agencies in the county that are in Jackson County, all the offices, whether it be whoever they are, and then say, hey, you know, come with your proposal and tell us what you can do. And give them all an option. They all have the opportunity to sell it. Because if you're gonna show it and you're gonna take bids, you're gonna run down there three, four, five times a day to open that door for somebody.
I guess.
And represent it. You're gonna have to represent.
How do I wanna say this? Um, honestly, I would hate to have somebody go and go through it now.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I mean.
We need to clean it out and get it cleaned. That's what we need.
Yeah.
I, I guess I don't know. How in the world will you clean those toilets?
Meritic acid.
Oh my God.
Yeah, meritic acid takes that off. But you really gotta be careful not to breathe it. I had one that I got and it was just, I mean, from the rust in the water and you pour that in and it just, and it really works before you don't wanna get anywhere close to it. Yeah.
It does work.
Play some of that too, but it smokes.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Jack. I don't think that the building is presentable enough right now to have anybody come in. So I think that's probably our next step. Well, our first step is getting stuff out.
My point is, if you're gonna do that, we can't take these baby steps and, I mean, we're, we, we, we all agree that we're gonna get cleaned out and cleaned. That's a week to two week process. So in the meantime, do you send, give the opportunity, professionals go down and look at it, give us your proposal, whatever you wanna propose. What do you think li- the listing value might be? I mean, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna hire somebody local, I think, but that's.
Well, I think the first thing is to get it empty.
I mean, I can drive by and give you my opinion, but that don't mean, you know, what it is is what it is.
And if we get, I mean, if you get people bidding on it, it's fair market.
Well, you gotta market it. You gotta, you gotta send it out to the market. And you're gonna advertise it somehow. You're gonna professionally go down and take pictures of yourself and advertise it or pay somebody to miss you.
Well, I don't think that. I mean, you could, but.
And so.
And that's a conflict for me.
The rest of the street from here, they're asking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a little piece of parking lot. That place down there is a lot better location than right here. If you're doing a business.
Oh, I don't know. This is pretty valuable to us, I would think. Or the city, but.
That could be a valuable place down there because it's at the intersection of, you know, the state of Iowa, actually.
Uh, I get it, but you go down and look where that state is for the road right away, which has changed. And it's basically on the gravel.
Yeah.
So there's sixty feet from that highway to property land.
Mm-hmm. But you can use that for, to drive on, right?
It's, it's no, no different than other roads. You put a drive on, yeah. Cause your setbacks are from there, not from the road, you know? Not the normal thirty-three feet. That's.
It's commercial. What's the setback? It's on the line. Well, that's, that's.
But that would be plenty of room.
Well, I think we just need to get Marty in and discuss with him and Mike about when they can go, what they can do, where they'll store it and work to get it cleaned out. And then all of the, like you say, the one closet was full of cleaning supplies.
Oh, yeah.
So um, those just need to be tossed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess that's kinda where we're at is have Marty go down, and I hate to say this, but take the dump truck down and you have good stuff, you have dump truck stuff. And when you're coming back to McCoquita, come through Andrew and get rid of it.
Yeah. Or come back with a load that you can either put up there or in the Peace Pipe Gallery, you know?
Right.
Make that decision. So how, how do you wanna proceed with that? One of us, somebody or?
How deep are you wanting to go when it comes to the cleaning? I mean, are you talking about doing any maintenance at all as far as any painting or anything like that? Or are we just talking about picking up the flies and vacuuming the floor?
And clean it to the best of our ability. You don't know what they're gonna use that building for. I'm not gonna stick money in that.
Okay. Okay. All right. So that needs to be.
I think we just wanna clean it out.
Okay.
Of, of whatever is there.
Mm-hmm.
And critter free.
Yeah.
Critter free and do some sweeping and cause actually I, I thought the, the main, the main schoolroom area looked good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the basement and some of the stains. I mean, the carpet obviously needs to go, but you know.
It, it's no, there's no doubt. Whoever buys it is gonna put some sweat equity into it.
Do you think we should paint it? I said, no. We don't wanna paint the walls.
The bathroom thing be clean. The water needs to be turned on. So I mean, there, that should work.
Well, I would think any construction company is gonna say that it has to be functional, whether it be furnace, furnace, air conditioning, water.
Should we test them well? For current water test?
Well.
You have a good idea?
I mean, we have, we have somebody that does that. So that's the case is that they've not been used forever and ever. So it's gotta be run somewhere, wherever.
There's a septic system up there. We need to fix that before we sell it.
We don't know.
Oh, well, I would guess that's up to date. It ain't that old. It has to be inspected. You can't transfer it unless it's inspected. I mean, you have to have a licensed inspector to inspect it. You can't transfer it.
And if it's, if it's the original septic system, it's thirty-one years old, thirty-two years.
Yeah, but there should be a record of it. After seventy-eight or whatever it was, there should be a record of it.
Yeah.
There should be a record here of it.
That was built in eighty-nine and now.
There's a record of it.
So that can be done.
So then we decided we'll go and touch base with Marty. It doesn't matter. I can do that.
Lisa and I'll talk with him.
Okay.
Anything else, Luann, do you all?
Do you want me to touch base with the offices and say, we're going to do this? If you wanna jump on and have a proposal or are you wanting to do that or?
Can you give us a listing of all of the potential people that we should be contacting?
MLS yesterday and they don't have a detailed, I'd have to go through all, you know, I mean, obviously we can pick three or four from this town and a couple from Bellevue. I don't know that.
There are more listings set up?
I mean, we do have, we belong to the Dubuque multiple listing, but I believe there's another agency that belongs to the Quad City multiple. So do we get those two multiple listings? Well, I would call them and say, hey, if you, well, there's usually reciprocity between the two systems. So if we do it on the Dubuque MLS, they will let us post it on theirs for, I will let out the office, whoever lists it, post it for seventy-five bucks or twenty-five bucks or something, whatever it is. You can do that between MLS.
Okay.
But I think that's up to the agency that lists to, to market that thing.
Sure.
Trying to sell it. So, was that a yes or no? Do you want me to contact them and say?
Yes.
Maybe the next meeting, just jump with a proposal if you're interested.
Yep.
You know?
We've done before when you're.
Give them, give us your proposal and we will basically interview you or whatever. Somebody gets the job.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Otherwise, the snow is gonna take us again.
Yep.
Um. I, I sent the email, I forwarded the email on to you, everyone, also about uh, what Lynn sent out to Emergency Management. They're having a special meeting on the fifth, maybe of October in Andrew. He sent it to all EMS services. I forwarded it all to all of you.
Saw that.
So it's training on the ISIC system and yeah, might be interesting if you're available, if somebody's available. So, you got it somewhere.
Hmm, I have to look.
Search my emails.
Okay, okay. I'll look for you. Yeah. I don't remember seeing.
I forwarded it, it, it come to, to me and I've been going to their EMS meeting. So.
Yeah.
And then they got all the other ones, thirty-some, whatever it was.
I'll look for it.
I forwarded to you too and to. So a special training they're calling up. They've got some radios ordered. They've been talking with Motorola and it's, it's, it's processes.
That's all good news.
Yeah. So we talked last time. I said, what do you think that the law enforcement, we're gonna get their radios until December? I think they got a bunch.
Wow.
Last week at the Together We Build meeting, um, they said that um, John was going to be here this week, John Hanson. Um, anyway, he's, what they told me is John said he was coming to meet with the board supervisors next week. And I says, well, not that I'm aware of. Cause he said, they said they wanted to discipline him also. And I says, well, I haven't heard that he's coming. So if he shows up, um, let us know.
I don't know when I talked to him last, but I thought he said he was meeting with the main contractor out here, talking about the footings. I thought that was last week.
I wonder if it was last Tuesday afternoon because Bruce Builders was actually at the site when I was driving to Sebula. Was John here too? I know Bruce Builders was here. Okay. And they were, they had a crane. They were unloading something.
Roof trusses.
Okay.
Well, we're getting surprised at the roofing material.
Oh.
Don't need that yet.
Well, but he says, yeah, he says, if I can get it, I'm getting it because otherwise you're ordering weight and weight. So hopefully. But I says, we're a long ways from that yet. He says, not really. So would the panels are done and come inside? The foot, yeah, the footing is put in. I don't know, but. Uh, are we all in agreement to send a letter to? Judicial?
Yes, um, I, the letter that you kind of worked off of, uh, Luann's, there was just one change, one change I made in it and I think it's ready to go.
I told you, I said, I told Mike, it was beautifully said. I, I was gonna get it last night on a Friday afternoon.
I need to hold my words to paper. But sometimes I gotta re- re-hit my things.
Yeah.
Ask my daughter all the.
I would say it's ready to send.
Okay. And is the change, is the change on here that I noted? Are you noting?
No, I don't think I. With this one word left out.
Whatever, I'm fine with that. We need to move forward with that too, in case we hire somebody and we guess it's a place to go because that could be a. I talked to Bjorn yesterday. I don't know if he told you that or not. I said, I think we should move forward with the office they offered for sure, but we're gonna need that one for sure. From juvenile probation, it's smart, coming to the wiring guy.
Yeah, get on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I agree.
And then put in the back of its head or whoever's head it is that we intend to use both offices.
Yeah. Yep.
Clear enough wiring stuff down in that conference room. We can put that table up, maybe sign there.
For like an hour, you mean, or something?
Yeah, or zoom texting.
So in the community room, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the community room has an owl in it.
We can, that's, that's wired. I assume there's wiring in the conference room also. There should be because there's a phone in there. So I assume that there's also wired for internet.
That's probably Bjorn's question.
Well, and you know, honestly, I think it is there because when state auditors come, that's where they sit.
So they get.
Yeah, yeah.
So I met a gentleman at Clash Reunion. And he said that he was coming to Jackson County, the Secondary Road Department to, I believe he told me he was going to audit the way we do our bidding process and one other thing he said, I don't remember. Oh, that's fine.
That's interesting.
Come and tell us if we're doing something wrong, but don't find us.
Yeah, yeah. So he works for the DOT?
He does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
He was there at my class reunion with his sister. She was in my class. We got to talk and.
No.
I knew he did something. I don't have any other reports.
Anybody else? Yeah, well, yeah, the Sunday I may um, get together out of Central Park last week. Oh, cover crops and stuff and different things. We had a good turnout. I'd say at least twenty-some farmers. And we had some really good discussion. We were talking about winter rye that they plant. And you know, those are flowering in right away now. When the crops fall out.
Yeah.
And you can actually see it earlier if you went back planting it. And they were throwing some numbers out on it and seen, it was twenty dollars for seed per acre. Uh, if you had somebody else, um, filed in. Filed in or what do they call it?
I think they drill, they're like a, like a seeder, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, some other twenty dollars for that. Or if you buy it on, then it's like a ten dollar. But they need more seeds. So you're crossing it up for like thirty. And then in the spring, you can go in and, and drill in your uh, beans. As the wheat's coming up. And then you wait for about three or four weeks or whenever the rye comes to a head and you can harvest it. And you're rolling over the bean plants, but they don't, I guess they don't damage them or something. You can combine that and then you spray it. And that drops the wheat back down and then the beans come up. And this one farmer said he did that. It's been doing it the last couple of years. He ends up with a thirty bushels of rye, which he sold for ten dollars a bushel, three hundred dollars an acre. Plus he put the beans came out with sixty-five bushels per acre. Double prop. And this has been going out since uh, Ukraine and stuff. If you can grow a more grain, the world needs it. Because they're concerned about that. So then I talked to the person that was kinda highlighting it out of a extension, it's a soil sap thing and water. But, but there's a Ryan Drollet, Region Seven. And I asked about a, a new guidelines for the farm, county farm. For no till and doing some of these uh, new practices. And I wanna call him and ask, I just probably run with you guys and see if we could.
Well, we certainly can look at, you know, uh, conservation practices. Yeah, I, I would see what he's got to say.
I think they've been chisel plowing then out there?
They're going by the conservation plan that FSA office put together.
Okay. Well, I brought up that they were chisel plowing. It says, no, that is not.
So whatever they have here is probably.
I don't know what kind of tillage they're doing if they're doing that. They made the rain simulation thing with uh, tilled soil. They take tilled soil, like a foot by foot square. And then they got a farm out of Des Moines where they bring up no till soil. Take a section of it, say it in Supreme. And the no till soil just absorbs, well, three times. So you take a tilled up soil like chisel plow or loosen up, it'll take about an inch of rain before the fines in it kinda slip over. And then it'll start running off. Just creates its own little slime layer crust of whatever. And it gets worse after one rain, it kinda crusts over. And then the next rain, it runs off even more.
They had them, there's plays up at, which one did I go to? At Piazza that time, I think they had a thing.
Yeah.
But what also works with the no till is you have to have a lot of worms that work way down. And you have all the water going down to that.
And that'll take up.
So it makes sense. It don't make sense, but it does make sense.
Well, that'll take up to three inches of rain before it will start running off.
Yeah.
One inch of rain per acre is twenty-seven thousand gallons. So that's fifty-four thousand gallons of water per acre that no till will take instead of the tilled up soil. And all that's running off is coming down our rivers and dragging the dirt with it.
Again, that's an education thing.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. And I think we should do it. Uh, one of the guys brought up too, he did that within the stubble from the, the wheat. After the bees come up, he says, it works good on the deer too, because when they go try to eat their little plants, they get stuck in the nose and they leave their, leave the plants alone.
Oh. Interesting.
And the rye also has an enzyme in it. It'll keep the wheat shrimp coming up too.
That's why you can't get your grass too long, Mary, in the pasture, right? Because if the cow sticks its head down there, they poke him in the eye and they get bitten.
And that's such a controversial thing now with the CO2 gas. I thought ethanol was the wave of the future. And that's such a controversial thing now with the CO2 gas. I thought ethanol was the wave of the future for clean air. Now they're saying we're destroying the atmosphere with it by making alcohol. Which I question that theory too. I mean, it's been going up in the air for fifty years. They've been making it. I haven't seen any dead bodies laying around, but all of a sudden it's a catastrophe and we have to spend all this money. And I mean, it's a lot of money. It's like seventy-five dollars for a cubic ton or whatever the measure is for. And then they need to build pipeline which.
So for the residence, I make a motion to adjourn.